The EEO Advisory Committee, acting also as the Staff Equity Committee, recommends activities, processes, and professional development training to increase workforce diversity and cultural competency. So, in a nutshell, not going through each one of the components, the 17, those are the eight major ones. Two of the non-negotiables within this plan, as you'll also see through the nine measurable methods, is that we have the EEO plan adopted by the Board and that we have an Equal Employment Opportunity Committee, and we definitely have those. Those are the non-negotiables. So, I'll segue with that into our next segment of the presentation, which is the Multiple Method Allocation Model. Now, this Multiple Method Allocation is basically nine categories, the best practices in recruitment, employment, and practices that promote employment opportunities for all. We have, EEO funding is now based on these FDESs that we have and the implementation of these best practices. So, we have met seven of the nine best practices recommended through the Chancellor's Office. Under the Multiple Method Allocation Model, districts must minimally have, as I stated earlier, the EEO Advisory Committee and the updated EEO plan, which we have in front of you tonight. And we must also meet at least five of the remaining eight multiple methods. So, the district has met seven of the nine, as I indicated earlier, and in order to qualify for the receipt of the EEO fund, districts are required to submit the Board-adopted EEO plan every three years to the Chancellor's Office. The plans are considered active for three years from the date of the district's Board of Trustees' adoption of the plan, and, as indicated earlier, districts are required to establish the Advisory Committee, and they serve in the role as assisting in the development and implementation of the EEO plan, which they did recently. And by the way, our plan was also vetted through the Executive Committee and through the CPC, the College Planning Committee. I'll go right into the multiple methods. As I indicated, there are nine of those. Four of the nine multiple methods are about pre-hiring practices that we have, so the best practices in pre-hiring. We have met three of the four practices in this area, which is really great. The Staff Equity Committee was formed in '07 with the charge of ensuring every aspect of policy relating to personnel and practices advance the realization of inclusion through our practice, and, of course, equal employment and nondiscrimination. The committee serves as the EEO Advisory Committee, as I mentioned earlier, and they were intimately involved with the development of this plan. Board policies have been reviewed and revised as necessary to ensure lawful compliance. You'll be reviewing those and hopefully adopting those tonight as well. That's Board Policy and Admin Regulation 3001, and this also aligns not only with our plan, but also with Title V regulations. Our current outreach efforts through recruitment, as I indicated earlier, have also led to a diverse applicant pool. In addition to using the standard forms of advertising, which most colleges use, we've also invested money into LinkedIn, which helps us target our recruitment efforts. The other two areas are hiring and post-hiring, so we have two elements, two practices within the hiring, and two of the multiple methods are hiring practices, which we have met, both of those. All procedures regarding the hiring process are based on job-related criteria designed to detect and avoid adverse impact on any monitored group or underrepresented group and ensure that applicants demonstrate a sensitivity to and understanding of the diverse backgrounds of our diverse college students. EEO representatives are required to attend one-hour in-depth EEO training and resources. A new training program for hiring committees was developed recently, so not only to meet the mandate, but also just look at best practices and way to evolve our process to restructure and reconsider aspects of the hiring process to make it more effective and inviting to applicants through an exploration of other best practices that are being used and recommended and options for our hiring committees as well. Now, the remaining three multiple methods are under the post-hiring, so we have the three that you see there on the presentation, and we've met two of these, two of the three areas. Equity was the focus of this year's Flex Day, as we all know. I don't know if any of you had a chance to participate, but it was a great event with the focus on equity and diversity. The college has also instituted a certificate program, which we refer to as Walking the Talk, which is a diversity, equity, and inclusion certificate program, and we also recently, I'm responsible for the Classified New Employee Orientation, have included a segment on unconscious bias, diversity, and equity, so that our new employees understand what the college stands for, and as they evolve through the organization, as either participating on hiring committees or being hiring authorities themselves, they understand the importance of the work that we do in regards to diversity and inclusion of all applicants. Additionally, with our LEAD Academy, there are components of equity and diversity throughout, embedded throughout the LEAD Academy as well. We, as a college, have not incorporated diversity or cultural competency training as a performance indicator in our performance reviews or in the tenure review process, so that's the one area that we did not meet, but we have met the minimum, is actually less than what we have met, so seven is very good out of the nine. In summary, we have developed an EEO plan, we have revised our EEO Board policies and administrative regulations to align with Title V. We have an EEO Advisory Committee and have met seven of the nine multiple methods of best practices. We will continue, of course, to monitor and evaluate our progress as we strive to strengthen our practice in alignment with Title V and the college's strategic plan as well. So, thank you for allowing me to present tonight on this very important plan that you have in front of you for adoption.
Great, thanks very much. Excuse me. The recommended action is that the Board of Trustees adopt the Equal Employment Opportunity Plan for 2016 through 2019 and certify the Multiple Method Allocation Model. As submitted, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee, seconded by trustee Archuleta. Any comments or questions?
Yes, I have a question, I guess.
Sure.
Regarding the two areas that we have not met. Just kind of a question regarding, what is the hard-to-hire area? What would that be? What areas would that be at our campus?
It could be, yeah. I would say that it's traditional, and critical shortage areas are typical and certain specialized content areas, such as math and science in some cases. In the management ranks, it could be IT positions at the higher level. We struggle in that area. In our economic development area, we struggle in recruiting some of those areas as well. So, those are some that I can think of off the top of my head that would be. Critical shortage areas are just difficult to fill because we're competing with other colleges for those subject areas where we have just a very limited number of applicant pool because of the majors the students choose to take in those areas, and, you know, with the difficult areas such as IT, we're competing with the private sector and economic development as well.
I could see that with the IT area, but I'm kind of surprised that in the math area, I mean, I would say 10 years ago, I would say it would be a challenge, but it seems hard, you know, that we can't find diverse faculty for those areas, but I guess it is when you say it's not just about finding them, but also the competition within the local districts.
And if I could add, trustee Archuleta as well, for example, with the IT area, it's not just Long Beach City College or even some of the other colleges having difficulty finding IT people, the whole industry, business included, is having a hard time finding the same people. We're all struggling.
Wow. Well, what does that say about what we need to do to prepare more students?
Right.
To go into that area, to attract more students in that area? And the other one, this is just, you know, more of a comment, but the number eight in the post-hiring, you know, it just, I wonder how we would evaluate, you know, diversity as a criteria? I mean, how do you evaluate how diver, or how the expertise or the knowledge that that person may have in terms of the diversity, knowledge of, you know, diversity and population? So, it's just, I just kind of question how that would be measured.
That is a good question, and I think that depending on whichever unit, if you will, that we would be looking to implement, we would have discussions around that to see what would make the most sense, whether you're faculty or maybe even classified or management. I think for every group, it would be different.
Yeah.
What we're trying to measure.
Yeah, I'd imagine that that one would be a challenge, so.
Yep.
Okay. All right, thank you. Good job, great job, really comprehensive.
Any other comments or questions? If not, we're ready for the roll call vote.
Irma Archuleta?
Aye.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
And Doug Otto?
Did you forget my name?
No, it wouldn't click.
That's what they all say. Aye. Okay, Agenda Item 7.2, this is a Revised Board Policy and Administrative Regulation 3001. It has to do with human resources. The Board Policy and Administrative Regulation 3001, formerly titled Affirmative Action, has been updated and retitled Equal Employment Opportunity. This is a first reading, so we're not taking any action on this tonight. Any comments or questions by anyone? If not, we can move on to 7.3, which is Ratification of the District and CCA/LBCC Tentative Agreement. Now, we are conditionally being asked, we're being asked to ratify this conditionally on the passage of this tomorrow, assuming it happens that the vote is completed by 3:00 tomorrow afternoon, so that's what the request is. I would entertain a motion?
So moved.
Seconded by trustee Kellogg, seconded by trustee Baxter. Any comments or questions?
Just a clarification, ratification of the faculty and also contingent on identifying the 20 faculty, is that?
Yes, it's ratification and the CCA identifying 20 faculty for the Supplemental Early Retirement Incentive Program.
Great, okay. And when do they need to do that by?
I believe they have until Thursday, or tomorrow, sorry, Wednesday.
They should complete by perhaps around 3:30 tomorrow, and they'll be getting to our superintendent president the results of that election.
Okay. Election and identification of the faculty members?
Yes, I believe they've already got the 20 needed. I know they have.
Okay. Okay.
They can take more than 20, right?
Nope, just, I'm kidding. No, yes, we can.
Just minimum.
Is it die between now and tomorrow? Would they be counted? Oh, I'm sorry, it's a lawyer's question. So, any further comments or questions? Then I would, we have a roll call vote, please?
Irma Archuleta?
Aye.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
And Doug Otto?
Aye. 8.1, Approval of the Revised Board Policy 5017 Student Success and Support Program Services. This is an action item. It's recommended that Board of Trustees approve the Revised Policy 5017 as submitted. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Archuleta, seconded by trustee Baxter. Comments? Questions? Roll call vote?
Irma Archuleta?
Aye.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
9.1, Institutional Memberships for 2016/17. This is an action item. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Archuleta, seconded by trustee Baxter. Questions? Roll call vote?
Excuse me, we seem to already have something filled in here.
Is this a Board docs error or is this a?
I believe so, we haven't been down that far.
People are going too fast.
We'll have, okay, we have Archuleta and Baxter. I'll just, you'll see on the screen. Archuleta?
Aye.
Irma? Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
And Doug Otto?
Why does it say aye already? Oh, no. Carries unanimously, we are now to the Superintendent President's Legislative Update. Information.
Thank you, Board President. Otto, we want to give you a brief update on the legislation that's making its way through both the Assembly and the Senate. These bills are still a long way away from passing out of the legislature to the Governor, but we wanted to at least give the Board an understanding of those bills that we are tracking, and to do that, I've asked Myles Nevin to present that information to the Board this evening. Myles?
Thank you, President Oakley, and good evening, members of the Board, colleagues and guests. As President Oakley mentioned, we are nearing the end of the legislative session. Each year, as you may know, there are thousands of bills that get introduced and are hammered out in the various houses. We're really looking at a handful of bills at this point, and just wanted to give you an idea of where those bills are at and be able to answer any questions if you have them. You have a sheet in front of you, and I've categorized these bills into three categories just to help organize them, and the first is called California College Promise, and I'm calling it that because the authors are calling their bills California College Promise. And we all know the College Promise as something very specific here in Long Beach, something that includes a variety of elements, collaboration, pathways, breaking down barriers. The list really goes on and on, it includes many things. These two bills are both very specific, parochial, if you will, in just looking at providing seed funding or incentives or innovation grants to get these programs off the ground. And so, the first one is by Freddie Rodriguez, it's 1741, and it really tries to do this in the same way that Long Beach did it, and in fact, the author has cited the Long Beach College Promise in his bill language, so trying to mimic what we've done here and allocate about $25 million out of the state budget to do that and to help communities around the state do that. The second one, by our very own Assembly Member Patrick O'Donnell, aims to do the same thing but to a much smaller scale, allocating $1 million for grants up to $25,000 apiece to create curriculum and career pathways between school districts and community colleges. So, really, two very similar issues, but doing it in some different ways, and I think as these two bills move on, if they are successful, they will likely be asked to be condensed and become one bill, as is typical in the legislature when you have legislation that's similar to each other. So, the second category, I've called Access and Success, and both bills I want to provide information on here are authored by Doss Williams, Assembly Member Doss Williams out of Santa Barbara. The first deals with AP credit and trying to get the 10 colleges, or college districts, rather, in the state who do not currently have a policy on awarding credit for AP courses to adopt a uniform policy, and to do that through the Community College Chancellor's Office so that the policy is truly uniform statewide. We here have a policy in place, so this doesn't affect us in that way, but I wanted to bring your attention to this bill because I think it's very similar to the student success conversations that you all have been having around breaking down barriers. And for a student who, for example, wants to transfer between Long Beach City College and another college, this could help them if they're going to a district that doesn't currently have a policy on accepting AP credit, if they could do that in the future. I wanted to bring your attention to that. The second one is one you've probably heard about, one that our ASB passed a resolution on, and it deals with homeless students. And we know that there are a variety of roadblocks for our students that are experiencing homelessness and hunger insecurity. Doss Williams here is trying to provide one more level of support to these students and do that through the provision of showers on campuses that currently have showers, and ask the district to develop a policy on safety, on hours, and on what that program would look like. So, something that might cost a little bit of money but isn't insurmountable, I think something that will probably get through the legislative process. It has a lot of support behind it. It's a very personal issue to Doss Williams, being that he was a homeless student himself when he was in college in Santa Barbara. The last section is on career and technical education, and so one bill here dealing with financial aid, and then another. So, the first by Connie Leva, SB 66, is trying to align accountability metrics in the state with those on the federal level. So, specifically getting at increased alignment between workforce and economic development outcomes here and nationally. So, in many ways, I think this bill is a cleanup bill. It's trying to just remove a regulatory barrier, and then also provide from the Department of Consumer Affairs in California licensure outcomes to the community college district so that we can then make improvements to those programs. So, an important issue there. Again, there's a lot of support behind this from the state level, from the league and others. The second one is one of many Cal Grant reform bills that has been introduced this year, and every year, as you may know, there are many Cal Grant reform bills, but this one by Jose Medina, who is Chair of Assembly Higher Education, is trying to affect several reforms within the Cal Grant B and C programs. So, specifically trying to provide additional support to vocational programs, students that are in career technical education programs, doing that by providing an access award, and also doing that by increasing the age limit and increasing the overall purchasing power of the Cal Grant C. For a lot of the elements of Cal Grant A, B, and C, there have not been significant changes since these programs were introduced decades ago. The purchasing power is dwindling constantly, and, you know, rightly so, he's trying to pay some attention to the CTE programs where those students could really use some support, and do actually now pay tuition and fees, have so many ancillary costs like clothing, et cetera, depending on what that program is. So, that's it on those bills. You know, in terms of the legislative process, this week is the deadline for fiscal committees, so we'll have more information soon. The deadline for floor votes is in August, and then, of course, the Governor has until the end of September to sign legislation. But I think in terms of our timeline, we might want to come back to you mid-fall and give you another update. Before I go, I did want to just make a couple of comments on state ballot measures. You previously passed a resolution on the facilities bond, which has been qualified for the ballot. There's also Prop 30's extension. Both of those obviously affect Long Beach City College and the entire community college system in California, so we'll be watching those. And then, you know, there's not too much happening on the federal level, so we won't talk too much about that. Happy to answer any questions, and I'll close with that.
Just when you're ready. Trustee Baxter.
Yes, could you go back, scroll back to the homeless, the issue on homeless? Myra, thank you. Here's my question. It talks about $25,000, did I read that somewhere? Or am I not reading that? Anyway, incorporates its provisions as part of the Triple S P and funds used for ongoing costs. What are considered the ongoing costs? The cost of the showers or the cost of supporting homeless students?
It's specifically the cost of implementing a plan to provide the showers, the safety plans around the showers, the district facilities for maintenance.
Oh, it's under Patrick O'Donnell's, thank you. Go up to Patrick O'Don, so, go up to Patrick O'Donnell's. Okay, that's where I saw it. Thank you, President Otto. So, what would be the eligibility, what could the $25,000 per college or maximum grant be? What would that be used for? And could we be included since we already have a promised program? I'm always looking at money.
Great question. Well, really, the determination would be made by the Chancellor's Office. So, on both of these programs, they would be administered by, for Rodriguez's bill, it's the Superintendent of Public Instruction and the Community College Chancellor, and then for O'Donnell's bill, by the Chancellor's Office. So, I don't know if President Oakley has more information on those, I don't at this time.
All we know is that we have asked Member O'Donnell to make sure that we are not excluded.
Yes.
But based on the amount that's being provided, there's a sense that although we appreciate Member O'Donnell's work here, $25,000 doesn't go very far, but we will certainly make every attempt to capture our share.
All right, thank you.
Trustee Archuleta.
Yeah, I have a question regarding the homeless bill, Williams' homeless bill, and it's interesting that he did not include something related to pantries on campus, supporting food pantries. As we know, that's part of the challenge for many of these students, that they come to school and they have no means to purchase, you know, lunch when they're here, and so I'm just wondering if there's something that we could do to include that. I know that happens to be the case. I know that was the case for many of our AB 540 undocumented students, and so many colleges initiated pantries within certain offices. And I know that some of the categorical programs utilize some of their resources to buy meal tickets for their students, but if a homeless student does not belong to any of the categorical programs, they have no way of, you know, getting some type of, you know, food or nutrition while they're here at the institution, so. Is that something that could maybe be recommended?
Trustee Baxter has some information.
I'd like to respond to that. We have a food pantry at both campuses here at Long Beach City College, provided through individuals and corporations and students donating. Right now, the ASB is having a food pantry drive. I'm not sure if they're giving the food to me or they're putting it someplace else, Alejandro, but weekly, daily, we have students come shop in our food pantry, which includes non-perishable food items plus toiletries, and we track those students, and we ask them to fill out a form just so that we can provide statistical analysis for people who ask. Unfortunately, we had a student intern from the School of Social Work at Cal State Long Beach this semester, but she, her last day was like May 8th, and she put everything on a spreadsheet, and I haven't had a chance to analyze it, but we do have that data, and we are able to reach out to the students through faculty, through the Viking newspaper, through the student body, and I'm sure not everybody has been informed, but we are working on that. In addition, the ASB is providing for students, and Dr. Peterson, maybe you can respond to that better than I, because I don't want to say the wrong words, but the situation about the gift cards, okay? But so, and we're also working on bus passes and things like that, so we are addressing it.
Well, and these are great ideas, so I hope they're going to be accompanied with resources, because otherwise, it just, again, you know.
That's why I was looking for the $25,000.
I know, I know, so, these are great ideas.
But I think the issue here is whether in this legislation, it's included, and it doesn't appear to be. I haven't read their legislation, but maybe we can communicate that availability of food pantries or whatnot might be something that they could consider, and I guess it's pretty late to try and amend these things, given the upcoming June 15th deadline, when the both Houses of the legislature will certainly have passed their budgets, because otherwise they won't get paid, and so all that will be wrapped up.
Just more competing interests for the institution, yeah.
Jeff Kellogg?
Just a quick question, because there are some bills moving forward regarding the California Promise. Of course, there's the American Promise, the California Promise, and Long Beach College Promise, which we started about 10 years ago, so my question really is more to Superintendent President Oakley. There was at the beginning of this, there was somewhat of a strategy to try to integrate all these different efforts from the national level to the state level. There was a lot of problems with how those were doing. Are these bills, are these all piecemeal, or is there an overall strategy to reach the goal of the California Promise? Are these just efforts by individual legislators to do a small component of it? I don't know if there's a general plan, or they're just trying to get something through, and it really is that it's, you try trying to get something through. And it really is, then it's, you try to just cobble the whole thing together, which isn't the best way to go. But I, so I don't know. What is the strategy with these bills? Are they just, are these supported by the governor? Is somebody carrying them with the end results? We're going to have the California Promise? Or is this just the effort to put a few legislative bills forward? Or do you know?
The primary strategy, which is led through the Assembly, primarily the Assembly Higher Education Committee and the Chair, Member Medina, is to put together a bill package that includes Rodriguez's bill, AB 1741. You know, O'Donnell's bill is included in there as well, along with the Cal Grant reform bills. That's basically the bill package that they've promoted. And you see some of the names on those bills, State, California College Promise. But there is no overall bill moving to the legislature that really promotes the same components that we have here at Long Beach or that the president proposed in his America's College Promise bill. So, that's the extent of the effort. And I know that the league has been promoting those bills as a package as well. But at this point, we don't have any indication if the governor is supportive of that effort.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Baxter.
Yes, I just wanted to make one more comment. And that was, a person in the community last week implied that the college is paying the tuition for the Long Beach College Promise. And I just want to verify, affirm, whatever, to the public that the money paid for the tuition comes from the Long Beach City College Foundation. No tax dollars are used for that promise section. And I think it's very important that people in our community understand the community people are paying for this. And when other people from Orange County or Bellflower or wherever they call, and they want their child to be included, I say, well, you have to go back to your residence, and you have to convince your charities to give to this very outstanding program. So, college dollars are not used to pay for the scholarships for the college promise. Thank you.